Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, May 6th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. And we are going to start tonight's meeting with two committee meetings. We're going to start with the Transportation Committee. And this is led by Chair Solve Spionis, joined by Beth Claudfeldter, Micah McCary, and Jeff Reisner.
Okay, so this evening, we're going to have Kristin Miller come and talk about the Chamber of Commerce concerns regarding the West Union Street traffic issue. So if you want to come up and check in and say what you want to do.
Hello, thank you. Just as a matter of clarity, my board member, Jonathan Robe, is going to speak first, and then I will make some comments afterwards. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Patterson, members of the Transportation Committee. My name is Jonathan Robe. I'm the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce's Advocacy Committee. First off, I just want to say thank you and congratulations for the hard work that Mayor Patterson and his administration put in to getting the recent award for the Appalachian Community Grant. Personally, for me, I started jumping up and down when it mentioned utility burial. So I just want to say congratulations, Mayor, for good, hard work. I'm excited to see that project kick off and the results. Anyway, the Chamber and President Kristin will come in with additional details. The Chamber has been in communication, both with the city administration, for which we are very grateful, and also members of the Chamber and members of the community about the ongoing project on West Union Street. First off, again, we are very appreciative of the city's work and the city administration's work in getting this project that's been a long time in process started and in progress and pushing towards completion. And the Chamber and its members are very appreciative of everything that the city's doing. Kristin, though, has a few comments about some issues that have been brought to the Chamber's attention. But the Chamber recognizes, we're all in this together, we're all one community. Athens is, in many respects, a unique model of a community that, I think, offers other communities a model of how to be an integrated community, a welcoming community, one that is diverse and welcoming to all members of the community. And the Chamber is just excited to see even this project, which, you know, some people might say, oh, well, it's just a road construction or a utility construction project. But it's yet another way in which the city as itself can just build and indicate that welcoming, inclusive approach to solving the problems of the people and encouraging thriving businesses in the community. And so the Chamber just wants to indicate its sincere appreciation to the mayor and his hard-working administration at navigating a difficult project and continuing to do so for the betterment of the city and the business community. So with that, I'll turn it to President Kristin. Thank you very much for your time. I very much appreciate it, and thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, President Crowe, for putting us on the agenda. I appreciate that. As Jonathan said, we really just want to work together to make sure that all of our businesses thrive and succeed. I was born in Athens. I have lived almost all of my 45 years here. And what Athens is, is a collective of amazing business folks who, you know, they have a dream and they work to create these businesses. And the last thing I want to do is see any of them fail because of things outside of their control. With that said, we have had many members of the Chamber of Commerce, as well as businesses who are not yet our members, reach out to us and ask about communications regarding this project. They aren't sure where to look for the information. I've spoken with both Mayor Patterson and Director Stone about the city's email and texts signed up, and I'm trying to encourage folks to do that. However, more specifically about this project, we've had a lot of businesses who, when they come to their business in the morning, they can't get in. They're blocked off. They have to sit and wait for sometimes 20 minutes or longer just to get in their business. Customers are certainly not waiting that long. One of our businesses, a pharmacy, has already had layoffs, prescription transfers. They had to buy another car for delivery, which is just costing them more money. The American Legion reached out and asked if there was a schedule of the work being done, as their delivery drivers were told that they may not use the trucks that they were using to make deliveries any longer. So they stopped coming. So these are just a few examples of what is happening on Union. When our businesses have approached the folks with Shelley and Sands, the results haven't always been good. After speaking with administration, I'm going to make sure that these folks know to timestamp when things like this are happening, you know, who is the person that said this to you, who's blocking your roadway, who's cursing you out, and get that to administration in order to properly handle it. We've met with many of our businesses, many of whom are here. They're struggling, and I hope that you will hear some of their stories, some of their requests, and let us know how we can be of help to make sure that all of these folks continue to have these businesses that keep us exactly what we are. Thank you.
Thank you. And does anybody have any other comments, questions?
Chair, we live on Third Street in Athens, co-owner of the Athens Real Estate Company. Some of the things that the city could do to help--
Could you please sign in and, sorry, and say who you represent? I think you started to do that.
The Athens Real Estate Company.
Yeah, thank you.
So some of the things that the city could possibly do. We're missing customers. I think if the city could help reimburse some advertising expenses, that would be helpful. I think the city can hold Shelley and Sands to the contract and provide a little more city oversight on how the workers are acting towards employees and customers, and make sure that the project's done on time. Another thing that the city can do is they can relook at the property values along that stretch right now. I know that there's some other businesses that have thought about selling currently, but their businesses aren't worth as much because it's harder to get customers in. So I'd like to see reduction in taxes. If those three things happen, it would go a long way.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this issue?
Hi, my name's John Vidicans. I was here last time, you guys. 104 Maplewood Drive, I live at. And I'm the owner of Athens Slice House. We've lost over $10,000 in the first quarter. $10,000. Not through bad management, not through hurricane, a tornado. It's from you, the city, has cost me that and customers. We were profitable for three years in a row. Now I've got four employees. The rest have had the layoff. This is disgusting. And I turned to you last time and asked you for help. What did I get? Nothing. I'm really, really, really mad about this. $10,000 out of my pocket. Lost, okay? You, when you have a small business, you don't go to zero. You hear people saying, oh, yeah, they're not making any money. No, you go below zero because your fixed costs are tremendous, just like they are on West Union. And it's insane out there. From one day to the next, it looks like this company doesn't know what's going on. And since the city entered into a contract with them, there's only three things. Is it, was this intentional? Or was it just ignorance? Or was it who knows what? I want to know, I need some actionable plans that I can take besides suing the city. I'd hate to sue the city, but I need my money back. If this continues, that's $40,000 to be open in the city, okay? I paid taxes here for 24 years. Not only that, the thousands of employees that I've had for 24 years here in Athens. So I expect something from the city from this. Really, really mad. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have a comment? Anybody?
Yeah, my name is Ken Ayers, and I'm here both representing Habitat for Humanity and also a City of Athens resident. There's a lot of frustration about communication going on, both between the contractor and the business owners, but also the city and the business owners. And there just seems to be a breakdown in communication a lot of the times. And I had an incident myself, my wife also did, where they had, the contractor had closed the right-hand and straight-turn lane last week and on Union Street parked equipment there. You could not see that intersection from Schaefer. And people were running the red light. And so, you know, people were coming down Schaefer, people were running the red light on Union, and it was danger. And so we called EPW, and EPW told my wife that the issue with the red light was they're breaking the law and it wasn't his problem. And, you know, I don't know who to call with these situations. Like, we had an incident over the weekend with OU move-out. We had a big rainstorm, and the contractor did not compact the gravel in front of Siemens correctly. And so it created a six-to-eight-inch rut in the road that was a puddle. So nobody could see that there was a six- or eight-inch rut there. We know it because we're in construction. We know not to run over those things. I had to call the sewer department, the sewer plant, to call somebody to get it fixed or to get it coned off because I didn't know who to call. So, you know, these issues are continuing to be a problem. And in addition to that, to add insult to injury, during move-out, another contractor parked two pieces of heavy equipment at the corner of State and Schaefer, right at the corner, one on State and one on Schaefer. So it made it difficult for trucks to pass around them because they were parked in the area where you couldn't, you weren't supposed to park anything. And they had left the crosswalk exposed, the cavity. And so if a kid went through, they'd fall through the cavity. And so I think there's just a breakdown in communication that needs to be addressed. And, you know, I have pictures, more than willing to share those. But that's one of the problems we've got to get addressed, especially if we're going to have another construction project on Union Street that's going to impact us. We've got to get these communication issues resolved and try to deal with this stuff proactively rather than reactively. Oh, yeah. Sorry, yes. And we cannot confirm this because we don't have video camera footage. But we're almost certain that the contractor urinated on our building. Not an uncommon thing in construction for something like that to happen, but definitely not appropriate in this situation. Why? Well, we don't have security camera footage because it happened there, or we don't have a camera there. Our restore manager is almost certain that that happened. And they blocked our part, or they also blocked our entrance for 20 minutes. It wasn't a piece of construction equipment, it was a car, a Shelley and Sands truck that was blocking us for 20 minutes. So, you know, the problems are comprehensive and complex. I understand construction, but they got to get resolved, I mean, before something serious starts to happen.
Thank you. Member Swain.
Several meetings ago, when this topic came up, and I don't know if you have the answer as Chair of this committee or not, that we would, as a city, look into, I won't call them solutions, but three actions that might address this. And in no particular order, one was the cost of expediting this program, which quite honestly, I don't think is a good idea. It just shortens the suffering. The second was to hire human flaggers so that traffic can be maintained in both directions. Anyone who travels southeastern Ohio this time of year comes upon this all the time. You wait for a minute or two, and it's your group's turn to go through, and that would, to a certain extent, possibly open that up, and as to what the cost for that would be. And the third thing was, if not human flaggers, the mechanical lights, which were on 13 North of Gloucester when they were doing those bridges in the last year or two. Again, there would be a cost associated with those. This was several meetings ago, at least a month. Do we have those figures? Those costs?
Okay, I know that, I think, let me just begin, and then I'm going to defer to the mayor. But I've been in touch with John Hensler, and he's been in touch with John Carey, who's the Director of Appalachian Services or something for Ohio at the state level. And they looked into dollars to try to see if there was some program that would provide up to about $100,000 in order to get, to make this project go more quickly. That's what I was told. Well, anyway, I spoke with John Hensler today, and he said that that was not going to happen. But, he said, the one possibility was that there was one last program that they were going to look into, which would provide money for the businesses themselves. But, again, that was just an effort. It was a last-ditch possible effort to see if there was some funds available. I don't know where that is right now. We just are waiting for an answer. So I don't know how that's going. Another thing, so, but nobody has said anything about flaggers, and perhaps the mayor can discuss that. Because the contract itself, under the maintenance of traffic provisions in the contract, specifically say that it would be one-way and doesn't really mention flaggers much at all. There is supposed to be a liaison, a community liaison, who is supposed to be at your beck and call at any time to resolve any issues. That apparently, from what you're saying, is not happening. So I'm curious about what, and there are, we can be reimbursed if they're not doing their job on that. So that is something that I think the mayor should know more about than I do now.
I can reach out to the Director of Engineering and Public Works about the liaison. If the liaison is not engaging with the business owners, that's an issue. Because Shelley and Sands has appointed a liaison to work with the businesses.
Two pages of instructions, yeah.
The other issue that I can speak to is that we have been working with Shelley and Sands to potentially have a change order in which to accelerate the project to where two-way traffic flow comes sooner than what is currently scheduled. So, but we still haven't gotten to a solid place with Shelley and Sands on that. Those are my updates.
Yes, it's my understanding that Director Stone has tried to get those numbers from Shelley and Sands as quickly as possible, but they have not responded yet. Yeah. So that's a situation up to date. I provided that information to the Chamber, so she can share that with anybody who's interested. And I will all keep her up to date, and everybody else too. So if you have any other concerns, let me know.
So let's go back to this tax issue that somebody brought up, because it appears in the last month, we've got no numbers. That's bad grammar, but we have no numbers, which is disappointing. It's unacceptable. Let's go back to the property or the tax thing. I don't think as a city, and we have to defer to the Assistant Law Director here on this, as a city, I don't think we can waive or pass legislation dealing with sales tax. But what about property tax?
We don't collect sales tax with the city. No sales tax goes to the city.
So I guess what I'm getting, at what level of government? Is that the state level?
County.
County and state?
County.
Okay. So I guess what I'm asking is, would we need, not us, we could call them, though, on behalf of our constituents, county, to look into, if not waiving, certainly reducing on an impacted basis, all taxes that the county levies on our businesses? I'm just trying to follow chain of command here.
Yeah, it's something we could look into.
Because, again, even if this gets expedited a month, you're still getting beat up between now and then. And I do mean beat up. Because when we start laying people off, that does affect the city. Because that's income that's not being paid and income that's not being taxed. And we already have a hiring freeze. So in a sense, this affects the city too. But more importantly, without those businesses, as Ms. Miller said, we don't have a city. So I hope we're not sitting here a month wondering what the costs are going to be. I'm not a businessman in this town that has a storefront that's been affected by this. But I was an independent businessman for 23 years, and I can only imagine having to look somebody in the eye and say, your hours are gone or your job's gone.
Okay. Member, do you want to speak?
I mean, so that leaves us, as far as the three ideas brought forward with advertising or advertising reimbursement, is that something that we could do or forward? PSAs, advertising at ball fields, things like that, that we could do? Or is that outside of our realm? I'm just trying to find things that we, as council of agency, to press levers on now. Is that something that we can back?
Like a resolution?
No, I mean, actually, so maybe putting signs up, paying for advertising on the ball fields, people, hey, Larry's Dog House has Diamond Dog Wednesdays. Summer baseball, dogs, Slice House, go to lunch at Slice House, this kind of thing. So we could, like, put up ads to try and bolster things on the ball fields where there's going to be a lot of people this summer, and then we can encourage people to go over.
10 days ago, I asked for a simple sign to be put up at the corner of Schaefer and West Union. It simply said, "The following businesses are open and have them listed." A sign's still not there.
Okay, but so can we do things for, like, paying for advertising? Is that in our?
Yeah, I think this is something that the Law Director and the administration have to discuss. That's not really our purview in City Council, is my understanding. So if we could get an answer back about that and inform the businesses. And really, if there's some creative solutions that you'd like to see, if we can do it possibly, we'll certainly look into it. Go ahead.
I think that individual business owners probably know how to advertise for their own businesses better than the--
Um, I think that individual business owners probably know how to advertise for their own businesses better than the government does. So I'd really like to see a reimbursement. Um, but the other thing is, with the moving of the entrances and exits, it's really confusing on where to turn. If the city could also just give branded signs to put on the far right side to make, to figure out, tell people where to turn to turn into our businesses, that would be helpful too. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Members Swain. I recall exploring this question a few council meetings ago. Whether the general fund could hypothetically be used to, uh, offer some funds to the businesses, and I recall, didn't recall if it was the auditor or if someone else gave the clarification that it would be possible, uh, but not recommended, particularly in our current situation with those funds needing to come from the general fund. But, uh, that's just my recollection of our last conversation about that particular idea.
Go ahead.
Maybe, uh, transportation funds then, um, that would be, because that would be directly from transportation and therefore, um, something. Because, yeah, we're on the, uh, long discussion about general funds for sure, but maybe there is something more relevant?
Go ahead.
I recognize that this is complicated, given that so much of this falls under administration, and, uh, we do review the contracts for our, uh, service providers, and in this case, it sounds like the contract did not detail use of human flaggers, that that's not something that was emphasized. So I suppose one question that could be more of our purview is whether that contract could be, and probably be an administrative function to amend it, but do we have the purview to use transportation funds to add flaggers to a project that didn't initially have them?
Um, I'd like to say that one of the conversations, uh, is that if the hundred thousand dollars can't come through or some money to support the businesses, then another option could be that we borrow the money and then see if it can come through. Um, I know that's under discussion. I don't know how far that's gotten, but I know it's under discussion, but it can't be done unless the Shelly and Sands provides some new numbers for everybody. So a lot of pieces to this. Um, it's unfortunate. I'm hoping that we have, can come up with some creative solutions quickly, because obviously, everybody's been hurting for a while. So we're hoping to hear back more from the administration about what options are available, and please feel free to say what you think. President Miller?
Thank you. Um, I believe I heard someone saying earlier that it is a part of the contract that the community liaison needs to be meeting with, um, the business owners. And while I certainly can't speak for all of the business owners on West Union, I can speak for all of the ones that I've spoken to. And there's not a single one in this room who has ever met or knows the name of this community liaison. So if that is something that is in the contract, clearly it's not being followed. Is there a fine that is assessed to that contract? And where does that money go if something's not being followed? Again, I know nothing about contract law when it comes to transportation. However, um, you know, speaking with these folks and, you know, hearing that there is supposed to be this person that, um, keeps them in the loop. We don't even have a name, so, thank you.
Well, the contract clearly says that if the person is not doing the job, then, uh, they don't, that money goes back to the city for every day they don't work. And if they've done nothing, it seems like perhaps we can pursue it.
Hi, I'm Ali Rapli, Representative of the Athens Real Estate Company, um, and my address is 73rd Street. One thing that came up in our, um, West Union Stakeholders Meeting this evening that nobody has mentioned yet is, it's hard to write and speak, um, is a planning issue with regard to this construction project. Um, but we're not really even discussing, um, the Schaefer Street portion of this, the Herald Avenue portion of this. And we're hearing now that the intersection of State Route 682 and, um, West Union will have this roundabout project beginning not too long from now. It's difficult when folks form a habit to make them change that habit, and this habit of people avoiding the West Union Street, area in general, um, can only continue if another massive, uh, construction project is begun so soon in that area. So I'd really like the city to consider, um, the plans and how they'll be implemented, and consider giving us a break. Um, get traffic moving again, and give us a break from the construction before beginning another massive, uh, project in that end. Thank you.
I don't think that project is supposed to begin until '26 at the earliest.
Well, if we think this project's gonna be done this year, I'm not so sure about that.
My name's Chris Ricciacci. I'm the, uh, Managing Partner of Avalanche Pizza, uh, Avalanche Slice House. I live at 66 East Stimson Avenue. I can speak firsthand as to the experience of the Stimpson's project. Uh, my, I have two things. Uh, one is more a question or, uh, hopefully looking to get some more information as to who to talk to about potential damages. Uh, is that something that we talk to, like insurance-wise, Shelly and Sands or is this through the city? Uh, but I can tell you firsthand that, uh, the construction project on Stimson had massive impacts to my home. Drywall cracks, foundation problems. They blew out the water lines several times. Uh, the water heater basically exploded in my basement. So I'm worried about these aspects as far as our business goes on Union. Uh, who do we deal with with that? Uh, who can we talk to as to get sort of in- insurance claims as far as that goes? And then it was brought to our attention tonight as well that, uh, a handful of business, uh, employees on that area were parking in the ball fields, because it was easier to get to the business from there than it is to actually come down the street. And we've, I guess, discovered that these people are now getting ticketed for parking in that parking lot, which I think is absolutely ridiculous, but, uh, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, unless there's anything else, I think that we've, oh, we have one other person? Okay. Unless you have something really different, I think we're gonna, I, no, go ahead, but after this, if we haven't, unless we have something really different, I think we probably have covered the issues and need to move on.
My name is Wayne Strickland. I'm a CPA, and my business is at 326 West Union Street. And I've had some of the most difficult problems with Shelly and Sands. They would block my parking lot. We couldn't get in or out. My clients couldn't get in or out. It was around April, a week before April 15th. They had to call the police. They were cussing and yelling at me. I'm one person. I'm 71 years old. I'm not a threat to anybody. But I just went out there to ask them, before construction began, "Could you move your dump truck just eight feet?" I went like this, "Eight feet." Just so my clients could come in and we could leave. And the truck tried, truck, truck, truck told me to shut up and get in my office building. I didn't have any clients coming to see me anyway. And I said, "How would you know they can't get in? They're just going on down the, the street." So I just wanna say, Sala, the engineer, he's been very helpful. Uh, I called him and said, "There's gonna be trouble down here." And, uh, I went out there the same day, and so some lady told me, when Shelly and Sands first said, "I can park anything I want to on the street on your right-of-way. Wherever I want to, I can block your, uh, parking lot. I can park wherever I want to. I have the authority to do whatever I want to on your right-of-way." I went and called Sala. I said, "Hey, Wendy, these, these, can you help me?" You know? And sometimes they'll park their pickup truck this way on my parking lot, blocking it, when they could park sideways along the fence and nobody be blocked in. I don't think they care very much for the property, uh, rights of owners. Anyway, so, um, and then I got, the lady told me that, and then I got a phone call at my office. Um, and the guy said, "You talked to my daughter," that was my daughter he talked to, "I'm coming down to see you. And I'm not gonna be talking. We're, we're done talking. I'm coming to see you at your office. I'm on my way down." Now that, do y'all hire a bunch of thugs? I, I really wanna know, because this was a threat on me, and I just said, I laughed and said, "Come on down. I'm here." You know, "What's he gonna do?" I don't know, but he said he wasn't gonna talk, so you can figure that out. And, um, so in the meantime, Sala come down there and, uh, was there in my office with one of his people, and two off, police officers came in. They accused me of harassing them, which is ridiculous. I said, "I was begging. I wasn't harassing. I just went eight feet to be..." And there wasn't any construction at the time, and he was just waiting. And he could've moved. He said, "Sure, I'll just move it eight feet this way or that way." I'm not, but he did. So anyway, and so the guy came in, and he didn't come in. Sala said, "He went out there and stopped them from coming into my building." The police were there. He got the police to leave. Said, "There's no reason to call the police." And so my concern is for my employees and me. If any of Sala and Sands, Sands had come into my office with aggression or violence, I will protect my employees and myself. This should have never happened to a property owner. I'm a CPA. I'm not in construction, but he was threatening me and my employees. And so I have methods to defend myself in my office, and I will use them. So City Council knows now that threats and aggression is not permissible. It shouldn't be allowed. And he was somebody's supervisor's supervisor. He was kinda like the head. Sala told me. He was the head of the heads. And so he never came in my bus, business, but he threatened to. And so I don't even know what our property rights, do we have rights? With their parking, their equipment tearing up our payment? Now, I know the construction has to do. I understand that. Everybody's gonna be inconvenienced, but you don't need to be cussing at someone, yelling at them into my office for everybody to see. And, and so when they said how I was harassing them, they had like eight or 10 people out there in front of my little office, talking and pointing and all this stuff. I'm going, "This is Athens, Ohio, and you hired these guys? You actually hired them? This is what you hired them for?" I don't know, but I was threatened, and I didn't get to come to the last meeting. But, um, I wanna ask you a question. Who is accountable for Shelly and Sands? Liability? Because if there is trouble, I will defend myself and my employees. I, I have the means, and I'm telling you in advance, if he should ever come back in my office, or any of those employees come in my office and show forms of aggression, I will defend us. And I understand from the meeting we had earlier this evening, they've been cussing at other people, yelling and cussing at other property owners or, 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 uh, customers. Is this allowed? Who do I call about their vocal behavior? This is your employee. This is who you guys hired. And I mean, these guys are big. I'm five foot 10, 190. These guys are huge. And they're, uh, Sala asked me to go out there and get their names before he came. He said, "If they won't move their vehicles, just get their names." Well, that was not the thing to ask me to do, because that was a violation of their personal rights or something. They, they said, "We're not gonna tell you who our, when our names are or who we are. Call the police. You're harassing us." And the police did show up. So I had Sala and his assistant and two police officers in my lobby. And the guy was not coming in, I guess, but that was gonna not talk to me. He was, he didn't get in my office. So anyway, so my, my, they don't care. Shelly and Sands, I mean, I've gone out there. Can you at least move just enough to sweep through? Can you just, just enough to, fuck, April 15th's coming up, and it's very important. So they don't really care. I mean, they simply do not care. And there wasn't just one of them yelling at me, you know, walking by, cussing at me, yelling from me from the truck. And so I'm going, "Really? I can't believe these people are talking to me that way." All I asked them to do was, and I kept saying, and they were filming me. They had cameras on me. And I said, "Eight feet. That's all I'm asking. Is it one way or the other, that way or that way?" And they wouldn't do it. I can do whatever I wanna do. Now Sala came down there. He's been a lifesaver several times. There's gonna be trouble here. And he'll come down and he'll settle it all. I see him out there trying to talk to these guys. I don't know if he's the one I should contact, but who do you contact for violence, uh, for threats? They're your contract workers. Do I call the city? Do I call the police? Do I call, who do I call? They called the police on me. Now, now I wanna say this one other thing. They've been trained, I can tell, how to talk to property owners. They know what to say. You're, you're keeping me from doing my job. You're harassing my, they know all the key words. And I'm not stupid, you know? They see these typical things that makes you feel like, "Get in your building, shut up, and don't give us a problem." And that's their attitude. And, um, um, so anyway, I wanted to just share that, just, uh, this is who I'm dealing with. Now, that was a month or so ago, and I think since Shelly, uh, Sala, I can't pronounce it, Sala came down and they've been better. They've been better as far as blocking. They've been better, but there was almost violence involved, and I don't know. Anyway, I don't wanna go on, um, so anyway, so threats and harassment should, you should talk to these people. Don't threaten the property owners. Don't cuss at them. Don't use foul language. Who does these things, you know, in the city? I don't even know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Strickland. We're gonna have to move on. I'm sorry. I appreciate, I'm over here.
Anyway, that's it.
I, I neglected to do our timer tonight. I apologize. It was about the third speaker when I realized it, and I didn't wanna then shut everybody else off and not be fair, so I, I do apologize for that, but thank you for your testimony. Um, the information provided tonight is, uh, is very disturbing, and, um, I appreciate everybody's input. Um, and I hope we can, um, uh, resolve some of these, these, uh, these problems, quite frankly.
Good question. Um, we've been here for 41 minutes, had a meeting, we've heard a lot of things. And as often happens, when we move on to the next agenda item, these folks will move, gather on the sidewalk. And they'll ask, "What did we hear and what's gonna happen?" So the question I would have is a very simple one. What can we say to these business owners and community members that our next concrete steps will be?
That's really the administration's responsibility, so I'm gonna defer to the mayor.
Yeah.
So as I've mentioned earlier, we're negotiating with Shelly and Sands right now to speed up the construction project or work on a change order for that. Uh, I heard some disturbing and interesting comments as well, um, you know, if you can, you can always contact Sole or you can contact, you know, Andy Stone. Or if you truly feel like you're being threatened, you can call our Chief of Police. Um, you know, you can call Athens PD if, if you feel like there's threat of harm to you, and that's the first thing that I would encourage you to do. Um, I've, I've written down notes. I'm, I'm listening, everybody. And for me to sit down first thing tomorrow morning and have a, a deep dive meeting with Sole, with Andy, and with, uh, Chief McGruder, um, to sit and, and talk through what we can do, and, uh, yeah, so, and, you know, work with the Assistant Law Director to see, you know, what other avenues we have, certainly going through the contract. Again, to look to see what kinds of potential liquidated damages there could be under the contract. Um, and so we'll, we'll explore that as well.
And it's very obvious that the community liaison is not doing their job. So I think there's some, uh, reimbursement we can get for that, that perhaps we can move to the businesses instead. So I think that would be a fairly easy fix. Well, not fixed, but something we could do.
Can I say one last thing? Uh, we, me, my business, we don't want charity from people. We, we seriously, this isn't a little pauper with sour grapes to, to broadcast out to everyone. I just need the road open. I need fairness and consistency from the city and from that street. Uh, however you get it done, I don't really care. It's just, I need my customers back, or I'm gonna be out of business. And this is a few months. This is months it's gonna happen, okay? I'll take my sign down. The, the lease is gone, or all that revenue for the city is gone, okay? And that's where I am at right now. So this is really, really important. We need to get, move on this. And what does this portend to the roundabout? And what does this portend to the roundabout? Are they gonna shut the whole bridge down for months at a time? We're looking at a whole year now, there's, they said December? Someone said December, but since they're not communicating with us, we don't know. So we're in limbo right now, and it's $111 a day, that's how much I'm losing for only being open six hours, okay? $111 a day. I can bring that down to the minute if you want, so you guys could think about that. Hey, John lost $111 today, okay? So please think about that.
Thank you all, that concludes transportation.
Thank you, everyone. Um, we will be moving on to city and safety services. If there's anyone who was just here for that portion, we'll wait a minute or two for you to depart. Our city and safety services committee is chaired by Micah McCary, joined by Jeff Reisner, who was absent today, Alan Swank, and Jessica Thomas. I'm not sure if we will have public comment on these items, but I will be using the timer. Uh, again, I apologize for neglecting that.
Thank you, President Crowell, we'll go ahead and get started with our city and safety services committee meeting for the evening. Uh, first with consideration of ordinance 49-24, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a 2024-2027 partnership agreement with the Athens County Commissioners as applicant and grantee if funded for submission of an application to the Office of Community Development, Ohio Department of Development, O-D-A-D, for the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, which is abbreviated CHIP, and declaring an emergency. Section three indicates that the ordinance would need to be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of health, welfare, and safety of the residents of Athens, Ohio in order to meet the June 20th, 2024 O-D-A-D grant application deadline. And with that, I'll ask the mayor if he has any comments.
No, I think you should turn it over to Mr. Per.
Okay, thank you to our guest, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself to everyone, and do we need to sign in?
As a guest, he's, he's great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to speak with the city this evening. Uh, my name is Glenn Crippen, I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development at Hawking Athens Perry Community Action in Gloucester. Our agency serves, um, an administrative capacity as it pertains to large grants, um, and large grant-funded projects, and just administrative capacity for a whole gamut of services that we provide to low to moderate income households in our communities. Every two years, we, acting on behalf of the county, um, as their administrator, we request, uh, that the City of Athens and the City of Nelsonville join a partnership for the sole purposes of applying for this grant. About 12 to 14 years ago, the city used to apply on its own, and this, our funders asked us to collaborate regionally to, to submit less grant applications. And we get bigger grant agreements or, or more funding. So the way it's structured is we ask the county to be the lead applicant. And we ask the City of Nelsonville and the City of Athens to join, and we've done this for at least the last eight to 10 years successfully. HAPCAP on behalf of the county writes the grants to the state, and it's very competitive. CHIP is federally funded and state-funded, and there'll be about 19 to 23 awards statewide, usually over a million dollars per grant. And, um, if we can get the city to join the partnership, which we have successfully done, we can deliver services to your residents and ask for more grant funding as well. So, um, that's a little bit about what we do in the CHIP program. Some of the eligible activities in the CHIP program are home rehabilitation, home repair for rentals and owners, tenant-based rent assistance, and, um, down payment assistance accompanied with home rehab. For a household to be eligible for services, they have to be at 80% of the area median income, which defines LMI or Low to Moderate Income. And for, uh, for a family or a household of one in Athens County, for instance, that amount is, um, released today, updated as new, $46,100 for a household of one. For a household of two, $52,700, so you can see it goes up incrementally. And, um, if a household's income is at or below that level, they're eligible for the program, and we can help. We have a waiting list that's hundreds of houses long in Athens County, containing some in the City of Athens and Nelsonville. And, um, when we do get funded, we send all those folks notice that we've been funded, we see what's, we can do, and we serve who we can. It's, it's a great program, it changes lives. Happy to be a part of that and proud of that work that we do. And I respectfully request the city join the county and the City of Nelsonville for us to apply once again for a two-year CHIP grant. Happy to answer any questions about the program.
Thank you very much for that very helpful overview. With regard to the hundreds people's long waiting list, I, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that that list could go back as far as eight years?
It could.
Okay, and then with those individuals once informed of our success, would they need to argue for prioritization, or is it already locked in based on that waiting list?
We do go chronologically, and if they can re-verify their income and they're still eligible, they are selected first from the list. Um, and the maximum amounts of assistance per household are pretty big for, for a rehab, which are the huge projects or larger projects, and it's anything from the foundation to the roof. Those limits of assistance, I think, are around $74,000. A home repair is a much lesser project, it's smaller, and those projects can be up to $18,000. With the rehabs, there is a lien placed on the home by the county, and if the person moves within five years of having that assistance provided, there's a portion that they have to pay back, which creates the revolving loan fund, which we have to spend down every two years in conjunction with the grant, so.
One more question, we were recently discussing a different grant that was dependent on census data and income. Would we be looking, is that similar basis for?
It is.
Okay.
HUD, HUD area median income is the data that we use. And if you're at 80, if the household is at 80% of that, that's considered low income.
Thank you, questions and comments from other committee members, Councilmember Swank?
Ideally, how quickly do you need, do you need us to act? Is there a deadline for the submission of this grant?
It's June 20th, and I think we have time for three readings of the ordinance required permitting the mayor to sign the partnership agreement.
Other members of council? Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments about the CHIP agreement?
Just that my experience with the CHIP program, it's, it's been, there's a high demand. It's a very successful program, you know, we have, as Mr. Crippen was already mentioned to you, that we have been in this partnership form of application with the counties and with, with Nelsonville. And just to share with council, there's, I know of several citizens who have had projects done to their home under the CHIP program to have, you know, their roof replaced or to have a, uh, some internal utilities replaced because the need was truly there. So it's, thank you for all you do, I mean, it's a well successful program.
Thank you for your partnership and collaboration, and, uh, yeah, it's great.
Might just have one more question, uh, first for the, um, mayor. Do you have the sense that this is one of the initiatives, the grant opportunities the city pursues that most helps in our effort to create more quality and affordable housing?
I think that this is a great program to take what is maybe deemed as affordable housing in the City of Athens and improving it, um, so therefore improving the value of that home moving forward. So to that point.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Yes?
That's helpful, thank you. And then for the applicants who may have moved away, does the application stay with the home or does it, uh, go away because the person who applied moved? It goes away, okay?
Unfortunately.
Okay, so then will there be a number of applicants who've either moved or are no longer eligible, who then open up spots for other homes to apply? And can you say a little bit about what that timeline might look like?
Yeah, I mean, sure, I mean, anytime anyone is unresponsive to our solicitation of available applications, um, we try to contact them a couple times. If they're not, if they're unresponsive or have moved, they're off the list, and we move to the next person, so that's immediate. I guess, the replacement of someone that's unresponsive or no longer eligible, they're out.
So this might be one of those situations where you don't ignore the letter that says, or current resident?
Don't ignore the letter.
Okay.
A very important one.
Any questions from the audience or comments? Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Just one more comment, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but you can also use it to replace windows in your home? So it's, so think of it in terms of the valuation of that home and the energy efficiencies that that home would experience if you're replacing aged, single-pane windows, for example, and getting proper windows to be installed. So, so not only does that increase the, the valuation of the house, it's also putting more money back into that tenant's pocket because their electric bills likely are going to go down. Or energy-efficient appliances inside, or HVAC systems, things of that nature. So it's a good program all the way around.
And I must mention also a very similar program where we are recently awarded $1.68 million for, for the three county region that we serve. It's called Led Safe Ohio, and it was brought about through ARPA and the Ohio Department of Health in conjunction with the Ohio Department of Development. And they awarded it to counties, um, so we are serving residents in the City of Athens and out in the county, but in Athens County, um, I think we received $936,000, and we were able to obligate it in a month and a half on homes that were on the CHIP waiting list. And it's just barely scratching the surface, so it really helped preserve the aging housing stock a lot, and it's, so, we're doing a lot of good work. We have, uh, all of our contractors work Led Safe and, um, and so forth.
Okay, um, this brought up to mind situations where I've heard recently and otherwise about mold and things like that that are really more emergency. And obviously, if they're way down in the list, they're not gonna get attention.
This is true.
What happens to those kind of emergency things where something falls through the roof and?
Great question.
Mold or something.
There's a lot of emergencies, a lot of emergencies. We have a smaller grant where HAPCAP is the applicant and the grantee, and it's funded through the Ohio Housing Trust Fund. We use that for emergency home repair, but even that is exhausted fairly quickly. There's, unfortunately, um, the SCORI rubric for CHIP, it doesn't prioritize necessarily emergency because everybody really has an emergency. So mold is a tough one, mold's very tough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I see no other questions or comments on this topic, then we'll, yes, did you have a question or comment? You just need, we just need you to take the podium, introduce yourself, uh, sign in and ask your question, please. You can let us know if you're introducing just yourself or an organization.
Oh, myself? I'm pretty used, and I was on 19 East Carmen Street where I was originally found was on with East State Street at 316 in place. So I'm very confused what we're talking about right now, I'm like trying to think like, what the heck? I had to pay a low income base rate on my house, is that the thing he's talking about, or is it different?
That sounds different to me, um, but.
I'm so confused, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, we can make ourselves, I'm happy to chat after the meeting. If you might have individual questions about your eligibility, we can get you connected with some good resources.
It's okay, I mean, yeah, 'cause I forgot how to pay that, and then I'm like, I'm doing low income base, and I'm like, what's, what's the difference on this stuff?
Yeah, this grant opportunity will be different, but we appreciate your comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. It looks like that concludes for just that particular item, so we'll move on to our second item, second and final item for city and safety services this evening, the Washington County Jail Annual Contract. So this should sound familiar to, um, many members of council. And this will be ordinance 50-24, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Washington County Commissioners and declaring an emergency. Section one indicates the service safety director is hereby authorized to enter into a one-year contract from May 1st, 2024 through April 30th, 2025, with the Washington County Commissioners for the housing of prisoners in accordance with the contract attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. This is something that we do on an annual basis that comes at no cost to the city. It really just increases our resources, um, and if we have any questions from committee members, we'll start with that. Other members of council? Any comments from administration this evening? All right, uh, audience. If not, we will conclude city and safety services for this evening.
Thank you, Member McCary, council members, please, uh, rejoin us. And we will begin our regular business meeting. I'd like to start by acknowledging that here in Athens County, we live and work on land initially settled and developed by earlier people, particularly the Shawnee and Osage, and those identified through culturalers commonly known as the Adena Hopewell and Fort Ancient. This acknowledgement reminds us of the importance of honoring history, people, and the planet as we improve, as we look to improve our city's legacy. Our first order of business is to establish quorum. Six of seven council members are in attendance, so we have quorum. Next item of business is the disposition of the minutes of the regular session of council held on April 1st and April 15th, 2024. May I have a motion for the approval of these minutes?
I've moved that we approve the minutes as distributed for, uh, both sessions.
Seconded.
Thank you, Members Swank, Member McCary. Is there any discussion? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. We now have communications. Do any council members have communications they'd like to share? Member Spioness?
Yes, um, I was sent, uh, information by our former council member, Ben Ziff, who, as you know, is now at HAPCAP, uh, working on transportation issues. So, uh, he asked me to pass along this information. Over the past few months, the project team has gathered information about the existing transit services and feedback from the community through an online survey, a survey of, uh, existing riders, community meetings, and focused discussions with stakeholders. Using what we have learned through this process, two conceptual service scenarios have been developed for how Athens Public Transit Fixed Route Service could be provided in the future. Feedback from the community at this stage is crucial to the development of equitable and effective transportation routes. You can take the survey by going to the hcap.org transit survey, or if you have any questions, please reach out to mobility coordinator Ben Ziff at ben.ziff@hapcap.org. I've been in communication with him on, uh, bus stops and bus routes lately, and we're trying to work out some things for my neighborhood and, and areas where they need it. So he seems to have found a new good home for himself. So pay attention to that and take the survey, thank you.
Other communications, Member McCary?
Thank you, President Crowell. I'd like to commemorate that this is our first meeting since the start of Asian American Pacific Islander Month, so we want to acknowledge and appreciate our community members and encourage everyone to educate themselves on that. Council members are also aware that I recently engaged with the Strong Cities Network to attend a roundtable for mayors and elected officials on strategies for combating hate and polarization and extremism. This was to be at Columbia University in New York, and as many of you have been reading, we have had protests across the nation that ended up creating some security issues at Columbia University that prompted the group to meet at NYPD headquarters for a very productive exchange of ideas that I intend to elaborate on during a presentation at our May 20th council meeting. Plan to have the executive director of the Strong Cities Network and some of his colleagues present, uh, or at least answer questions from council about how this two-year partnership that we've entered, that's supported by some good grant money, could help us to even anticipate some of the protests that we might see during the fall and the course of the presidential election. And honestly, to congratulate our Ohio University students, not only those who just graduated, but those who've engaged in really peaceful demonstrations. We want to commemorate and encourage that kind of behavior. That's exactly what's in line with the Strong Cities Network's philosophy of engaging in respectful dialogue across differences. And I know that's something that's very important for council to see, not only in council chambers, but also in our interactions within the community.
Thank you, Member McCary. Any other communications? We now have reports and communications from other elected officials. No report? Treacher Thomas? Assistant Law Director, any report?
No.
Mayor?
I have a couple of communications to share with council tonight. As you heard earlier from Jonathan Robe, the city of Athens, I made a trip down to MacArthur in Vinton County where the governor was awarding the second round of the Appalachian Communities Grants Funding. And it was, it was quite the pleasure to hear that Mount Zion Church is getting $7 million from that program. Athens City is getting 6.5 million for street scape improvements. And the Southeast Ohio History Center is receiving, I believe it's about 2.6 million for improvements there as well. So. And to further kind of share, because I think this is wonderful, is that within Athens County, the city of Chancy is receiving almost $2 million for, or maybe a little more than $2 million for their street scape project in the village of Chancy. So our partner to the northeast, northwest, received funding as well. The other items I want to share with council tonight, we, I received an email in recognizing four of our police officers who responded to an individual who was having serious health, having a serious health, acute health issue. And if it wasn't for the quick and decisive and calm actions of these four police officers, the individual may not have survived. And so I just want to share that with council that I'm very proud of those police officers and the way that they're truly community policing these days with our police department. The other communication that I received also had to do with the Athens Police Department, and it was, again, the professionalism of responding to an uptown business that had a serious issue that was taking on, taking place within the establishment. And the way in which those officers engaged not only with the owner, but with the issue that they were having to deal with. Again, being highly recognized and in their, their way of policing. So to your point earlier of, you know, strong cities, again, this is in alignment with the way communities should be operating with community, community policing and other things that are going on in our communities. And so I just want council to, to know and recognize that, that it is being noticed that our police department is running operations in the correct way and very professional with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for sharing. Members Swank?
Mayor, even though there are three separate grants, all told, that's over 16 million dollars. And in your memory, and you've been right at Athens for some time, do you ever remember the city of Athens getting that much money at one time?
At one time?
Yes, sir.
Not that I recall, even when we have to go, again, have to go after bonds for projects and whatnot. Keep in mind, the fire station headquarters is 11 million dollars. Or a little more than 11 million dollars for that project. But to have this become state money that's coming to the city of Athens, not during my tenure as mayor. And, and let's not forget the 2.5 million that we received in round one for the armory.
Right.
So it's just shy of 20 million that we've received through this particular program. So, yeah. And trust me, I've said my thank yous over and over and over again to the governor, as well as Director Mahalik and to the governor's office of Appalachia, John Carey, because it's, it's Director Carey that is at the forefront of making this happen. And, and Director Mahalik, who has to sit there and figure out, okay, this, how do we, how are we going to get this money out to all the different entities? But to your point, Councilmember Swank, you know, we're seeing a lot of revenue coming into not just the city of Athens, you know, it was, it was what, 157 or 154 million in projects throughout all of Southeast Ohio. So this is, this is, this is a big deal. But bear in mind, these are one-time dollars, everybody. Yeah, because I have to say that to myself all the time. It's like, okay, it's one time. So make sure that you, number one, are delivering on the project that you've gotten funding for. And number two, you know, honoring that money going towards that project to have a great project at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we will now be moving on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 31-24 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit at 74 and 74 and a half North Court Street to replace an existing balcony located in the city right-of-way. Introduced by Councilmember Swank.
This ordinance is fairly straightforward. We've discussed it in committee, first reading and second reading, and it says exactly, almost exactly what it says. The balcony has already been replaced, but this is on the east side of Court Street, right across from the north end. Chairman, I would move that we pass 3124 granting the special use of the right-of-way.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions? And elected officials? Seeing none. Any audience members like to chime in on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none. If all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 32-24 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit at 32 West Carpenter Street to create a patron drop-off area located in the city right-of-way. Introduced by Councilmember Swank.
In light of the mayor's most recent announcement, this is a very timely ordinance that we have before us this evening. I will read simply section one. Having satisfactorily met the regulations established pursuant to Title 49, management, administration and control of the use of the city's public rights of way, a special right-of-way use permit is hereby granted at 32 West Carpenter Street to Mount Zion Black Cultural Center owner on behalf of applicant Susan Regai to create a patron drop-off area in the city right-of-way. So as you travel on Carpenter Street, make a right on, on, that's a misprint. We're not granting this on West Carpenter Street. It's actually on Congress. Yeah, and I thought we had corrected that. Clerk, okay. So to, to, to restate this, it's as you come up Carpenter Street and make a right on North Congress, it's right there around the corner. And the purpose is to make it a drop-off area, much like in front of the Methodist Church, which addresses pedestrian and accessibility issues. I would move that council pass 3224 with the noted change to North Congress Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions? Council members, elected officials, audience members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 33-24 is an ordinance amending ordinance 02-24, authorizing a city fiber network, project number 347, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. We've spoken about project number 347 at length in committee, and since then, this is entirely out of ARPA funds and just reflects an adjustment and increased cost for the project. So I move that we adopt ordinance 33-24.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions from other council members? Elected officials, members of the public? If not, all those in, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 34-24 is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to renew a five-year contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated to upgrade body worn cameras and tasers for the Athens Police Department. Introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. This has been reviewed and discussed in committee, and I will just review some of the official language. That section one indicates the service safety director is hereby authorized to renew a five-year contract with Axon Enterprise Inc., a copy of which is attached here to and incorporated herein with, by reference, to upgrade body worn cameras and tasers for the Athens Police Department. Section three indicates, or section two indicates that the service safety director is hereby authorized to expend up to $376,000 from the general fund for the said five-year renewal contract. Section three indicates that the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $6,500 to the general fund for police and for additional costs associated with the second half year payment. I would like to move that we adopt ordinance 34-24.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Other elected officials or members of the audience? Yes, Member Claude Felter.
The text was correct, and I think Member McCary does an excellent job of reading these things. But I do think it's worth pointing out that this money is coming out of the general fund police account, not the overall general fund, which we're trying so hard to protect. So.
Yes, good point of clarification.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 35-24 is an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2024 Energized Community Grant Funds. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And I believe, is anyone prepared tonight to speak to this on behalf of Councilmember Reisner? Member McCary, would you?
Sure, I'd be happy to read ordinance 35-24. I'll begin with section one. The council of the city of Athens finds and determines that it is in the best interest of the city to accept said grants and hereby authorizes the mayor to enter the 2024 NOPEC Energized Community Grant Agreement, a copy of which is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Section two reads, the city council finds and determines that all formal actions of the city council concerning and related to the passage of this ordinance were taken in open meetings by the city council and that all deliberations of the city council and of any of its committee that resulted in said formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Believe that before I make the motion to, to adopt, I'll just ask the clerk if there is confirmation that we did everything as far as the public hearings required.
Yes.
Okay. Well, with that, I move that we adopt ordinance 35-24.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Other elected officials, Mayor Patterson?
This is a reminder to council, we've, we've used this grant program to install freestanding solar lights, most notably in the Far East neighborhood. We've, we've put solar lighting on several of our bus shelters in the city of Athens. Early on, we purchased with this grant two solar canopy picnic tables, I guess, with charging ports for, for personal devices to plug in that we had at the city swimming pool at the community center and still do. And something that came to light that I find rather intriguing to share with council and the viewing audience tonight is the potential for taking this, the funding from this, we're, we're trying to get guidance from NOPEC to see if it's permissible to create a rebate program for the citizens of Athens who properly dispose of a fossil fueled lawnmower or grass trimmer or whatever, and show proof that they purchased an electric lawnmower or weed, whatever.
Weed whacker.
Yeah, right. Or hedge trimmer or whatever to get away from the carbon emissions associated with lawnmowers and chainsaws and weed whackers. So anyway, still trying to get guidance from, from NOPEC to see if this is something that we could potentially use our NOPEC Energized Community funding for.
Member Claude Felter?
I think that is a great idea about compensating people for switching out gasoline powered yard tools for electric ones. But I wonder, there are also people who are making their first purchase of yard tools, electric ones. And I wonder if those people could be compensated as well. You know, they just haven't had them before, but rather than getting a gasoline one and then switching, they're going straight to the green option.
We'd have to thoroughly go through whatever guidance we come up with for doing this moving forward. I'd like to see someone decide to dispose of, properly dispose of their two-stroke operated lawnmower. And then again, show, show evidence or proof that they did dispose of it properly, whatever that looks like, and that they have a receipt of sale to show that they purchased a, a electric lawnmower. And again, it wouldn't be covering the entire cost of this thing. I mean, it would be a rebate of some, at some level. We haven't looked at that. We haven't explored it. And again, I have to make sure that NOPEC says, yes, that's a, a proper and good use for that funding. I believe it's around $11,000 that we have because we have escrowed money, which NOPEC allows you to do from one year to the next. So we do have some carryover money. And then we have the allocation for this year that we would put into it. So it's, it's, it's a fair amount of money.
Thank you, Mayor. Please let us know what you learn about that.
I will.
Audience members, any comments on this ordinance? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading. I will read the title and then check to see if there are any comments or questions. These are ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 36-24 is an ordinance amending ordinances 74-21 and 116-22, authorizing Athens Uptown Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area, DORA, an hours of operation and declaring an emergency. I would take a motion to suspend the rules for this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a, a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor of, and what would be the reason for suspending the reasons?
It starts me. Uh, DORA started on Monday.
Today.
Today.
Tomorrow, actually, tomorrow.
Yeah, time's up today.
Thank you. All those in favor of suspending the rules for 36-24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The rules are suspended, Member Thomas.
Can I, we need to just move to pass? Make a motion to pass ordinance 3624.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt and a second for ordinance 36-24. Are there any comments or questions from city council, Members Swank?
Just an administrative question. Do we have signage that we can get up fairly quickly for the new area?
Thank you, Councilmember Swank. I'm working on that.
Okay.
I'm working on that because we would have to put up a couple dozen new signs along the Stimson Avenue quarter.
Thanks.
Other council members, any elected officials, any audience members like to speak to this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. The next ordinance we have for second reading is ordinance 37-24, an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23 and authorizing inter-fund transfers. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 38-24 is an ordinance amending ordinance 03-21, authorizing the city auditor to deposit 50% of the transient guest tax revenue into the tourism fund and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 39-24 is an ordinance amending ordinance 27-24, amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 41-24 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for any eligible community development block grant, CDBG program funds for program year 2024, introduced by Councilman Ordinance 42-24 is an ordinance authorizing a city network upgrade project, number 369, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Ordinance 43-24 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a bucket truck for the street department, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Mayor Patterson?
I would like to request that council consider suspending the rules on this particular piece of legislation so that we can make sure that we can purchase this new bucket truck because the seller is wanting us to purchase it, so we're committing to them.
I believe this is a used vehicle, correct?
It is a used vehicle.
And we have it identified and for sale, and we'd like to get it before it disappears.
Absolutely.
There be a motion from council for suspending the rules on ordinance 43-24?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 43-24. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. The, I believe it was Member Swank, the rules have been suspended. Was that your first?
That was the second.
I'm sorry, Member Claude Feltre, who got the first in there?
I did.
Okay, Member Claude Feltre. The rules have been suspended.
All right. I propose that we approve this ordinance enabling the purchase of a bucket truck for the street department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 43-24. Are there any comments or questions? Elected officials, audience members? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 45-24 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to pay the 2024 membership fee for the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, ORCA, to provide financial support from the city's transient guest tax for the Bay East Trail system, along with other recreational activities, introduced by Councilmember Wood. Members Spianus?
Yes, it was my understanding, based on conversations with City Auditor Hecht, that we would tweak the wording just a little bit on this for section one to be clear about when we can, because it seems a bit vague as is. So I was wondering if Auditor Hecht could say something about that.
There are, now that we've gotten into this big discussion, copies of our original bylaws and agreement with the ORCA have been circulated and amendments have been made. The portion of the first agreement that applied to us making our payment was moved over into the bylaws, which I think is the wrong place for that to be, and I would like to see some other changes made. And not really up to me to ask for all of this stuff, but I'm going to put it out there. Yes, the date that we are required to pay needs to be changed, and as I said, that was, that was one of the main things that was moved over into the bylaws, which isn't the appropriate place for it. We should be signing a new agreement every three years or however long we decide to go on these contracts, and that's where we would negotiate our payments. I also, as the auditor, would like to request an audit of the ORCA. We usually get automatically audits from all the other agencies that we deal with like that, just as we send out 30 or 40 audits ourselves every year after it's completed to agencies that we work with. School system, of course, they go to council, but Dunham Brad Street, ODOT, you know, it's, if we're going to do business with them at this level of contribution, we should have an audit for what they're doing. And I have, just for the record, I have talked to the mayor more than once about some of these things, and there are a few other things that, you know, I would like, I'd mention that, and the mayor has mentioned this, there's a clause in there about after five years that we contribute more based on improved, you know, what they've brought to our community. So far, no one has been able to really prove or evaluate that, and as Mayor Swank and I said today, there's nothing in our TGT payments that back that up, and so I think the mayor agrees that we'd like to take that, that additional payment out of there. It's a very large payment for us to be making to one organization, this cog. We've been working with the, we used to send it to the Chamber of Commerce, and then they split, and we have a Chamber of Commerce, and now we have an Economic Development Council, and we send them $60,000 after working with them with clear feedback on the things that we do with them and what they're doing for us, and we don't have that with ORCA right now. I'd like to see that happen. I guess I feel as the auditor that I should be able to ask whether I'll get all this stuff. I don't know, but anyway, I think that might be, oh yeah, and in there, I don't know if it's in the, I think it's in bylaws, there's no new agreement. It says that they would provide a financial, annual financial statement every year by January 10th. You know, I'll be the first one to say January 10th doesn't give them very much time to prepare their year end. I assume they're on a calendar year as we are, but I guess I don't know that for a fact, but that's probably why that date is there at the end of the year, but that they have a deadline and that we and everyone here gets a copy of that every year. I imagine they do it, I don't know, but we, I don't get it, and that's another thing I get from other agencies, school system, you know, around the county and the state because it's the auditor's office and we're supposed to look at all of that stuff, so I think that's it. There's, that's quite a few things I've asked for as far as the ordinance right now. It, you know, it says what it says. I don't think anybody intended not to pay this this year if we're able to, but we won't have specifically that money. We have money in the bank, but we won't have that TGT money until after July is when the payments will come in after the second quarter, and so I wouldn't expect us to be trying to pay that before then.
Thank you, auditor. Member Swank?
Since we discussed this three weeks ago, I've had the opportunity to speak with the auditor, with the administration, with the law director, and there's one other thing that I would like to add to the list that Auditor Hecht mentioned, and that is in the original ordinance 11019, and I think the mayor has expressed this on more than one occasion, possibly, if not surely, decoupling our contribution from that of the county. And to do that, we would need to amend 11019, much like the United States did with the 18th and then the 21st Amendment. The 18th Amendment established prohibition, and the 21st Amendment in, actually states that it repeals that, so we would need to, we would need to amend 11019 to take that out, to strike that out. So I guess I would come back to the auditor with the question, and I know you serve as the auditor and have done well for many, many, many years, but before that, you were sitting up here. On the 15th, I suggested that we table this. That was an error on my part. I'd like to ask the auditor, do you feel it would be better to take the existing ordinance, proposed ordinance, and try to repeal it, or perhaps because of the number of issues that you've raised, that the administration has raised, that rather than table, that we send this back to the appropriate committee to hash all this out, because it sounds like there's a lot of language here that needs to be cleaned up? So from your experience as a city councilperson, what do you think? Hate to put you on the spot, but...
That was a long time ago now, Alan.
Yeah, I know, but you, you're the only one here that's wore, has worn both hats.
I have, I have. That's a tough one, when you are sending it back to committee or deciding whether to table. And I guess I don't know what the protocol would be for these requests that the mayor and I have of changes to be made and whether we should try to put those in legislation or if that is something that should be handled by the board or which the mayor, our mayor is on and could bring up. I don't know what might happen. I don't know how often they meet, so, but I feel like we're looking, what, five months down the line before we're planning to pay this. I feel like the ordinance that says that it was dependent on the county is how, is the rule of law we operated under for the last four years. I feel like we should just have a new ordinance, which I think we've already taken that section out. Didn't the mayor ask that be taken out when we first started talking about this? And our Assistant Law Director might have other comments or want to research this, but I feel like we have been paying and the county has been paying until this year. So what's happened in there has happened and that we should move forward with this ordinance with our new language and not go back and try to rewrite the old, the first ordinance. There's not a lot in there. The things that I'm interested in changing or revising are things that are in either the agreement or the bylaws that I would like to see changed and have that attached to the new ordinance as the original ones were. We passed this all these other years, and there's not been anything attached to these ordinances that showed any of the other changes that they made. Not all of their amendments to the bylaws were financial, but they have made several amendments over the last three, four years. So that's my opinion, but I'm not the attorney, so.
Do we, we have other groups that come before us and report every year as a condition of receiving money, do we not?
We do.
Okay, so this would not be inconsistent with current practice?
Not at all, not at all. We, as, we have an agreement with the Convention and Visitor's Bureau, but we are required by the ORC to pay them half of our lodging taxes every year, but they still, we have an agreement and it gets signed off, and they, and they do come and report to us. Same with Economic Development Council, and, yes, so it's not, these organizations aren't our city operations. They have their own board, they write their own bylaws. Operations that go on in the city are run by the administration and council, if you understand what I'm saying here. So, so those are different, and they should report to us if we're giving them money. And sometimes they don't even give us money, but we have an agreement with them. They might be using city property, and we have an agreement with them, and yes, they, we deserve to know what they're doing and how they're doing and all that kind of stuff.
Member Spianus?
So this sounds, it sounds like we're being a little bit complicated here, and I'm concerned about that, but I'm wondering if that request for, you know, accountability every year, we don't have to have, do we have to write a new agreement? Do we, does that need to go into the revised contract? I mean, can you, can you just say, hey, we do this for everybody else, please give us that? And I think you said something about they're supposed to report by January 10th anyway?
They put that in there, we didn't, but yeah.
Okay.
I would think if I was them, I'd want them to change that and give myself more time, but yes, they are supposed to report every, every year.
Okay, so we don't have to change?
Well, give us a financial report, not necessarily.
Right.
But that's the other thing, some of the agreements we have are often more than one year, but it doesn't mean they don't give us updates every year. So we might do three years. We have several contracts that are rollover contracts. If we don't opt out, then they automatically rollover for another two or three or five years.
Okay, so we don't have to go back to the original 2019 thing to change that? We could do this to override it?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct?
Oh yeah, it's just like any other ordinance that you pass that changes something that we're doing, the most recent ones, you know, supersedes what you've done in the past.
So if we use the language that's in here, but tighten up the requirements based on your conversations with them and an existing contract, we could do this, would you be okay with that if we did that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you would be okay?
Yeah, it would be, this ordinance, I'd like to see a new agreement and a set of bylaws attached to it.
So do you, are you saying that we should change the language slightly to make sure that that's included in here, or couldn't this be passed as it is?
That would be up to council, and, you know, maybe somebody should talk to them, to the board and see what they, how they feel about some of these requests, if you want to.
Perhaps the mayor can give us more information. If we do attach bylaws and agreement to this ordinance, then we would want to state that in the ordinance.
Right.
And so those bylaws and agreements must be finalized before we can do a third reading.
Right.
Do we know whether the board is working on the agreement and the bylaws, new versions of them?
They are not. They are not.
So that comes back to the table or back to committee, I mean, we don't have to decide it tonight, but this is coming up in two weeks for third reading. So at that point...
This would be my suggestion, and, you know, I've asked that council not pass this right now anyway, but if you wanted to, wouldn't be the end of my world, but the fact is, we're not paying this till at least July, possibly August, and that would give everybody time to make those changes if you held off on passing this ordinance on third reading.
So I would just recommend that the introducer, Mr. Wood, look into this for what you want to do for this ordinance for third reading, knowing that council has and the city administration has these concerns?
Yeah.
Please.
If I may also point out that they did come and present on February, they gave a very detailed report on that time, so that is in our, in our records detailing that both the member reports that they gave us and the millions of dollars that they brought in, so those are already in our minutes, so they did in fact report, and it does have their financials in it, so I think that's important, but yeah, it's all fair.
And I would just say, I believe they've reported every year.
Yeah, they do report.
It's just not in the, in the...
They do report.
Yeah.
And I think that we also need to remember that this is not located in the City of Athens, and I know that the trail has a lot of people coming and going, and they bring in money. My question would be how much of that is actually in Chancy, because that's the only trailhead that would affect revenue in our city.
Sure.
So, you know.
Anodyne.
That's the other difference about it, is, yeah, they can bring in a lot of money, but, you know, where is it? You know, what is it, 58 mile trail right now? That's bigger than Athens. I mean, you know, so they're getting on and off in places without coming anywhere near Athens, if that makes sense. So unless they can narrow that down and track that people get on and off in Chancy, that would be a more accurate picture of what we're seeing.
Sure. Question?
Please.
Are you suggesting that we add that to this ordinance for the further reporting, or what are you suggesting?
To add the, the economic impact?
Or to add the reporting element?
Council, I mean, what does city council want to see? Members, let's start with Member Spianus, sorry.
Yeah, I thought the issue in part was that you need an audit, right? Am I missing something?
Well, they should be audited. Anybody should be audited.
Exactly, and so that is the question.
And so I don't know, we don't know that they've been audited ever. That's a general thing that I can ask for almost anybody's audit that we do business with. with for the city. You know, I have a right to do that, to make sure we're doing business with people who, you know, are transparent about what they're doing with their money.
They are a council of governments. I believe they have been audited, aren't they?
Yeah.
They are a council, I mean, they, they are, you know, and I believe they've been audited, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, President Crowell. Yes, this is a governmental entity. It's, it's a council of governments. I think what the auditor is describing is that, again, and full disclosure to everyone here and everyone out in TV land, is that I am the, the chair of the board for ORCA. And so I agree 100% with everything that the auditor has said, and that is, is going back and revising the agreement, and if that requires also revising some of the bylaws that are associated with the charter and with the agreement, that's within my powers as a board member to sit there and say, we need to do this. And so that's something that I, in, in my discussions with the auditor, agree, and that we need, I need to go back and get to work on that. I want to go back to something just real quick, because I'm glad that the auditor mentioned this. And I mentioned something very similar to this to council some time ago, and that was the fact that all of this came out of what was the pay-for-success model to have impact investing in the Baileys' trail, to make sure the trail gets built quickly and completely. And that's really wasn't the way things evolved over time. It shifted to where ORCA was fortunate, the executive director was fortunate to get a fair amount of grant funding through different capital stack players, and put some things together to where that is what has funded the actual trail construction going on, as did our early share of the pay-for-success model that we were under originally with the $90,000 that came from our transient guest tax. The only reason I'm bringing this all up is because there was that clause in there that spoke to success. And if this trail is successful, and it is an economic driver for Athens and Athens County, that it could actually, our payment could actually increase. That, too, was part of the pay-for-success model, to where if it improved by, you know, 3% or 5% or whatever, then we would be paying up to, I believe it was $125,000 total. I want to make sure that language is no longer in there, because this is a membership now. It has nothing to do with the pay-for-success model of doing things. So, anyway, I just want to explain that to council, but the auditor and I are in agreement with, and think about this, too. Since it is a council of governments, these are public records. Everything associated with the COG is public record and can be requested at any point in time as we move forward in time. The, what, what was mentioned, that, I know when I became mayor, the Athens County Economic Development was on a one-year contract moving forward in time, but, but the EDC had proven that they're coming and giving the reports and showing things to the city, and much like the Convention and Visitor's Bureau was doing, the Convention and Visitor's Bureau was on a three-year contract, basically. But by statute, under Highway 25 code, they're getting all their money. You know, we can't sit there and go, no, we're not going to give it to you because you haven't reported. But they, they did come and report every single year. We did change the contract with the EDC to where it was three years. I'm not suggesting that with ORCA. What I am suggesting is that it continues on as a one-year renewal, and then maybe in the future, we reexamine the length of that contract, but I am, I'm not recommending an extension of that contract at this point in time, because I think there's more, we need to continue to explore what this membership truly means for all members of ORCA. Member Swank?
Based on what the mayor just said, seems to me that we probably need to come up with a new agreement. And there are multiple ways that we could do that. We amend previous ordinances all the time. If you look back through our notes, and this, this ordinance XYZ amends and changes stuff. So we could go back and amend 11019. Second way we could do it is in the agreement, it says, "Any party may terminate this agreement in accordance with Section 4 of Exhibit A." Now, before anybody panics, I'm not saying we should terminate our relationship with the Baileys. But by terminating this agreement as opposed to amending it, we can start with a brand-new fresh one that's clean, that incorporates all the points that the auditor has shared with us today. It takes out all the language. We could do it either way. Again, let me state, by no means am I saying we should put a kibosh on the Baileys. I think everybody at this diocese agrees it's a good project and wants to see us succeed. But it becomes a question of what is the most expedient way to do it. I'm all in favor of, let's backing this up and putting it back in the committee from which it came, the finance committee, working these things out and getting it right from the get-go, rather than piecemealing it, part of it now, part of it at another time. So I would be interested in hearing from council members what they feel is the best way forward, amending what we currently have in front of us, amending 11019, or starting over from scratch, with the ultimate goal of setting ourselves up and the Baileys up for the greatest chance of long-term success.
Real quick, a point of clarification about the agreement. And I don't have it in front of me, but I don't believe the agreement is a city council document. It is a COG document. So it would not be us writing a new agreement or changing an agreement. It would be ORCA, and then we would agree to the agreement, basically, right? So that would be in their hands. Same with the bylaws. City council is not going to create the bylaws for the council of governments, but they would do that themselves. So just make sure I have that right. Member Clodfellow, did you want to say something?
I think your clarification means that I don't need to make my comment.
Okay, fair.
Thank you.
So the question, I think, for council is whether a motion wants to be made tonight regarding this, or at third reading? I look at the clerk to see if it matters, or to the assistant law director?
I concur with Debbie.
Member McCary?
Thanks. I'd just like to share my recommendation that we wait until two weeks from now to make the decision about tabling or returning to committee. I think that even just as a result of our friends at ORCA watching this discussion and hearing what we're looking for, that might get us some updates before then.
I think that's fair. Other council members? Yes, members Spioness?
Yeah, I, I feel as though, based on what auditor Heck said and what the mayor said and your perspective, thank you very much, too, I, I feel as though we could go forward with this, but, as was said, wait two weeks and see if, you know, some changes were made, and that the auditor feels, and the mayor feel more comfortable with all this. Because I don't see if, because the provisions here, provided the proceeds, proceeds of such tax are sufficiently legally available and lawfully appropriated, maybe one word change or two word changes might do it, and that would alleviate the issue of trying to go back to 2019 and going through all that again, or whatever. I think that that would make it easier and simpler, and hopefully in a couple of weeks, we can get some changes that make everybody happy.
I would agree with Member Spioness that the actual language of this ordinance is not problematic. It's pretty straightforward. It does put it, mean that we have to have the TGT, and he has to, you know, but we have these other issues, and if we are going to say, in this ordinance, bylaws and agreement are attached, then we're going to need those. If we don't do that, then it's less complicated. Member Swank?
But it is problematic, because the overriding document is 11019, and 11019 clearly states that the financial support is contingent upon. And that's why I cited the 18th and 21st Amendment. The 21st Amendment clearly states that it repeals the 18th Amendment. And by repealing it, it's like it never existed. As long as this overriding document, 11019, exists, we can't pay that money. This clearly states, it's contingent upon. So in this ordinance that we currently have, we're going to have to have that in something that repeals this part of it.
Member Wood?
Could we ask an actual lawyer?
I did.
Could we ask our, our council?
What is your question exactly?
If, if Alan is correct that we need to decouple this in some way, or...
I mean, he is correct, that if you, if, I mean, the governing document right now says that it's coupled, then it would be. So until that, until that gets changed somehow, then that's the rule of law.
Does this ordinance then change it, or...
No, because the language doesn't say anything about...
I already asked the auditor, or the law director.
Thank you, Member Swank. Let them finish, please.
Yeah, I already did. Did the homework for you.
Thank you, Assistant Law Director, appreciate that. So, Member Wood, mayor?
Well, unless Member, Councilmember Wood had something more to say. Is it possible to just insert a Section 3, actually, would be 2?
2.
2 would become 3. But it basically states that this ordinance, you know, therein repeals ordinance whatever, because the language is in here, you know, and so therefore it negates the previous ordinance and decouples us?
You can't repeal the ordinance, because then that repeals the agreement.
You would need a new agreement and bylaws.
But you could amend the ordinance language to take out...
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we do another thing.
Thank you.
So we could amend 11019.
Okay, we heard enough on this ordinance tonight. Member Wood, please let us know in a couple of weeks how we're moving forward. Thank you.
So if that's the case, do we want to, do we want to wait two more weeks? We're going to have to do amendment. That's just going to delay this even further.
I thought...
Member McCary?
Member McCary's point was a good one, that by waiting two weeks, we may hear more information from ORCA. But it seems to me that if we want to make these amendments and do some real meaningful changes to the documents, that we won't be ready to vote in two weeks. Because unless, unless somehow those documents all get finalized before the next meeting, we won't have the basis on which to vote in front of us.
So if that document in two weeks has one word different than what we currently have in front of us, it sends it back to first reading?
Which we, yeah, yeah.
Well, on the other hand, as the auditor said, it's going to be five months before we can pay this anyway.
Right. Yeah, it's, we'll be, developed to the liar honest.
So asking the clerk, would it be best to have the law director, with your consultation, take the existing ordinance and draft amended language that would pass legal muster and allow us to continue to fund ORCA for another year? I think that's the route.
And so what does that mean in terms of moving forward the ordinance?
Well, then, at the third reading, we, the amended ordinance would be, would be brought forward, which would take us back to first reading.
Okay. So that the public can weigh in? That's good.
Any other discussion? Okay, thank you. We are moving on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 46-24 is an ordinance, the city of Athens, Athens, Ohio, Ohio White's Mill Cap, Section 1135, project modifications for improvement of environment design and construction project Athens County, Ohio, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
We talked about this in committee a couple of weeks ago, but I will read Section 1 just to clarify exactly what we're going to be doing here, and who we, who, what entity we would be working with. Section 1, the city of Athens, Ohio, authorizes its service safety director, by and through its authorized officers and officials, to participate with the Department of the Army Corps of Engineers in the design and construction of the Athens, Ohio White's Mill Cap, Section 1135, project modifications for improvement of environment, Section 1135 of the Water Resources Development Act of 1986, as amended, with which project is located in Athens County, Ohio. This ordinance and the next ordinance are related, and it's dealing with that whole section, starting at White's Mill, down to the Richland Avenue Bridge, hoping to return that area of water flow to a safer and more environmentally friendly environment.
Are there any discussion from council members on this ordinance? Other elected officials, members of the audience? Okay, it's read for the first time. Ordinance 47-24 is an ordinance authorizing the local share of the United States Army Corps of Engineer, Hocking River Study, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
This is the money part, and I'll read from Section 1. The 2024 appropriation ordinance, 130-23, is hereby amended by appropriating from an unappropriate balance, the unappropriate balance, a sum of $40,000 to stormwater fund 755.635, Transcendence Code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. The service safety director is hereby authorized to expend up to $300,000 from stormwater fund for said local share. And this is our share for the study, so that when we hopefully get to this point, we've got everything in order so we can do it right, and we become a partner in the, in the project at this point in time.
Thank you, Member Swank. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Other elected officials, audience members? Thank you. The ordinance is read for the first time. Ordinance 48-24 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 25, Flood Damage Prevention, Chapter 25.01, General Provisions, Section 25.01.07, Basis for Establishing the Areas of Special Flood Hazard, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. Indeed, the basis for establishing the areas of special flood hazards needs to be updated to reflect newer maps. You'll see, and you'll have heard in our last committee meeting, that our prior maps were from 2009, and now we'll base them on 2024 maps. And these updates are necessary in order to be able to be eligible for the federal flood insurance programs. I will read some from the ordinance here. For the purposes of these regulations, the following studies and/or maps are adopted: A, flood insurance rate map for Athens County, Ohio, and Incorporated areas effective September 26, 2024; insurance study for Athens County, Ohio, and Incorporated areas effective September 26, 2024; and B, other studies and/or maps which may be relied upon for establishment of the flood protection elevation, delineation of the 100-year floodplain, floodways, or delineation of other areas of special flood hazard include Appalachian Flood Risk Reduction Initiative, Flood Risk Study of the City of Athens, Ohio, effective February 24, 2004, and revised March 2007, issued by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Division of Water Floodplain Management Program. And just a little more here, Section C, the Any Hydraulic and Hydraulic Engineering Analysis authored by a registered professional engineer in the state of Ohio, which has been approved by the city of Athens, Ohio, as required by Chapter, Section 25.04.03 subdivisions and large-scale developments. Any revisions to the aforementioned maps and/or studies are hereby adopted by reference and declared to be part of these regulations. Such maps and/or studies are on file at the city building, H. East Washington Street, Athens, Ohio, 45701. My only comment since our last meeting was that there had been recommendations that these maps be made more publicly available, and I am not sure that they found their way onto our webpage yet, but that was the primary recommendation, and don't know if any other council members have encountered the maps yet. Okay, then that's something that we can continue to follow up on, but with that, this has my recommended support.
Thank you, Member McCary. Are there any comments or questions from council members? City administration, mayor?
We are working with ODR to find the maps. I will share, as unfortunate as it was, I probably spent the better part... I will share, as unfortunate as it was, I probably spent the better part of a day trying to get to the bottom of the FINA floodplain maps, and the only thing that kept showing up was the last map in 2012. And so, we're gonna continue to press. Well, I think our, I think our citizens are entitled to seeing these maps, and it hasn't been easy. I think Mr. Delatch spoke to that at the next, last, at a city council meeting. He was right. Not easy.
Member Swank?
When one applies for a home loan, the bank grants that loan based on a person meeting certain criteria. If they're in a floodplain, wouldn't the bank have that map? Wouldn't a bank have that map?
A map, whether it's an updated map or not, we don't know.
You would think that they would, Councilmember Swank. That's another question that I'm gonna be asking, is some of our financial institutions that issue federal loans, loans?
Yeah.
Federally guaranteed loans, I should say, not federal loans.
I would think our local insurance carriers would know.
Or realtors.
Members, be honest?
Well, I know of one business happened to be on West Union, coincidentally, and that was paying an exorbitant amount for flood insurance, and privately had an official, whoever does these sorts of things, check it out, and found out that he was above the floodplain, and so therefore his insurance rents went way down. But he had to go ask for a private surveyor, whatever you call those people, to do it. So, yeah, people really want to know. But I'm sure, do the insurance companies really want us to know?
No, they don't.
Just saying.
Other comments or questions, audience? Okay, moving on. Ordinance 49-24 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a 2024-2027 partnership agreement with the Athens County Commissioners as applicant and grantee, if funded, for submission of an application to the Office of Community Development, Ohio Department of Development, ODOD, with the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. This ordinance was discussed in committee earlier this evening, which isn't how it typically works, but we are trying to move this through with the aforementioned rationale that in order to meet the June 20, 2024, ODOD grant application deadline, we would need to treat this as an emergency. Otherwise, I believe that this is a very important pursuit for council to support.
So, thank you, Member McCary. No suspension on the rules tonight, is that correct? But you'll be looking at second reading?
That sounds, that's, I don't believe that there's a reason to do it tonight, but, Mr. Mayor, do you know of any reason?
We don't need to suspend it this evening. As a matter of fact, I believe that this could likely run full course before the deadline.
June 3 would be the third reading, so we're good, 17 days.
Thank you. Council members, any comments or questions on this ordinance? Other elected officials, members of the public? Thank you. Moving on. Ordinance 50-24 is an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Washington County Commissioners and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Crowell. This, too, was discussed in committee earlier this evening, and this is an annual contract and agreement. We've therefore discussed it for the past few years. It's very beneficial to the city, and I encourage council to support it. All right, that's right. Thank you for that reminder, clerk. I do need to move for, that we suspend the rules to adopt this ordinance. Oh, for the aforementioned reason of the deadline for entering this updated agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 50-24. Are there any comments or questions about this motion for suspension? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the, and the suspension is approved.
Excellent. Now I can move that we adopt ordinance 50-24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of 50-24. Any comments or questions from council members? Other members of the administration, audience members? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 51-24 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III, Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.03, Executive, Other Officials, Section 3.03.21, Investment of Treasury Funds. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Is there a member of the Finance and Personnel Committee that would like to bring this forward?
I would be willing to.
Thank you, Member Claude Felter.
You're welcome. So regarding provision 0-51-24 from the Finance Committee, this does have to do with investment of the city's treasury funds. Section one reads, effective May 1st, so again, timing issues. Effective May 1st, 2024, Athens City Code Title III, Administrative Position, Provisions, Chapter 3.03, Executive, Other Officials, Section 3.03.21, Investment of Treasury Funds, is hereby amended to read as follows. Whenever there are monies in the treasury of the city, which will not be required to be used for a period of six months or more, such monies may, in lieu of being deposited in a bank or banks, be invested in accordance with the provisions of Sections 731.56, 731.57, 731.58, and 731.59 of the Ohio Revised Code. Investments purchased shall be sold in accordance with Section 731.57 of the Ohio Revised Code. And it's probably worth reading Section B of, or Part B of Section one. The city auditor is hereby directed to credit all monies earned in the city's bank accounts and investments to the general fund of the city, except those funds for federal or state grants which prohibit earning such interest, funds for which the city of Athens is acting as a custodial agent, funds that receive money derived from a motor vehicle license or fuel tax, bond funds that have been received and invested for a specific purpose or project, or the principal of a non-expendable trust fund. In the case of those funds that are an exception, the auditor is directed to credit all monies earned to the funds to which the principal sums of such deposits or investments belong. This shall be in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 135.21. So basically, most of the monies that would be earned from, from the proceeds of these investments would go into the general fund of the city, which is our most important fund, but then there are exceptions.
Thank you, Member Claude Felter. I want to quickly address the issue of May 1st, 2024, being at the start of this ordinance. Auditor, do you want to speak to that? Or Treasurer Thomas, thank you?
So, actually, I was gonna bring up, we were gonna actually request, it doesn't have to happen tonight, but if we could suspend the rules on the 20th, and that way just have this ordinance passed and done by the end of the month. The reason we're asking for May 1st is we have a sizable amount of investments that are gonna come due at the end of May. We'd like to see those go into the general fund in May. So that's basically our reason for trying to have that done.
So I'll turn to the Assistant Law Director, just to ask about having an effective date in an ordinance. Does that matter to us, if the effective date is in the past?
So, I don't exactly understand the question.
So we have at the beginning, Section one, effective May 1st, 2024, this is gonna happen, and we're gonna approve this at the end of the month.
Right.
Does that cause any, I mean, it's about where the money is, it's not really about something happening on May 1. Right?
It's okay.
It's okay.
I can put it down.
Again, for our purposes, if we can suspend and pass it on the 20th, that would be wonderful, because that way, Jessica Verber, now when we do the interest entries, we can just have everything set exactly the way we want it at the end of May. And it, it'll be a good thing.
Duly noted. Thank you, Treasurer Thomas. And I will say, between you and the auditor's office, I think this is a good move for the city, and I appreciate the work on it. Member McCary?
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge that it is somewhat confusing. So since we have until potentially the 20th to adopt this, if there could be some consultation, further consultation about how this reads, effective May 1st, whether we need to introduce the word retroactively or something to make it clear that this is okay. Sounds good to me.
Lots of points.
Good point. Thank you, Member McCary.
Yeah, I, I was thinking, I was just gonna say what Debbie just said. The, the, the effective May 1st is, you know, the same as saying it's retroactive, and we've done this many times on other ordinances that we, when we've needed to. But, that said, if you want to put some different language in there?
It sounds like just by virtue of having the conversation reflected in the minutes, we'll all be on the same page.
There you go. I agree with you.
Thank you, Auditor. Member Swank?
In this, Section B, except, and then da-da-da, bond funds that have been received and invested for a specific purpose, project. Right now, the, the fire station, we have a whole bunch of money. Are we able to do that, or is that money invested someplace else to collect interest? How's that work?
It's basically, it's in its own separate account.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, when we got that money, we put it in a whole separate account. So every month, that's tracked separately.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the treasurer? Okay, thank you. Okay, and our final ordinance tonight is 52-24, an ordinance authorizing the 2024 Street Paving and Repairs Project, number 370, introduced by council members, be honest.
Thank you, President Crowell. Okay, whereas Ohio University is, this is the annual thing, everybody, we have to do. You know, we have to keep our streets up. That's basically what this is all about, just the monies involved. So I'll try not to belabor this, since we're getting pretty late here tonight. So, okay, whereas Ohio University is participating in the annual paving program and will contribute an amount commensurate with their share of the work, which is nice, thank you, whereas the administration will seek an amendment to this ordinance upon determination of that amount. Being ordained by the Council of City of Athens, Ohio, Section one, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to accept bids and enter into contracts with the lowest and best bidder for 2024 Street Paving and Repairs. Section two, the 2024 Appropriation Ordinance 130-23, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unauthorized, unappropriated balance the following sums: $400,000 to Street Fund 220, transaction code 500; $200,000 to State Highway Fund 226, transaction code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Section three, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $600,000 as follows: $400,000 from the Street Fund 220, transaction code 500, and $200,000 from State Highway Fund 226, transaction code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount for said paving and repairs. Now we just have to decide where the money's gonna go and which streets are gonna be paved, so line up.
Any comments or questions on this ordinance, city administration, public? Okay, thank you. That completes our first readings for this evening. We now have announcements and other business. We have a couple of appointments to confirm. We'd like to confirm the mayor's appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Council members have the letter and resume of Mrs. Alicia Sweeney on your drives. Mrs. Sweeney is a Third Ward resident. She works for Ohio University in the Planning Department. She is a connection to our dearly beloved Paul Logue in that she worked with Mr. Logue as an intern in his office when she was a student at Ohio University. She is a graduate of Ohio University, and I highly recommend her. Mayor, did you want to say anything?
You summed it up well.
Sorry, I stole your thunder there. Any comments or questions on Miss Sweeney, Mrs. Sweeney, for the, yes, Member Swank?
Is she entering as a full member or an alternate?
Alternate.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. We have another, let's do the second one. Just go ahead, Member Claude Felter.
So, as the city council member who participates on the city's Environment and Sustainability Commission, on which I was formerly a citizen member, our committee would like to propose to renew Megan Westervelt's term. Her first term expired on May 3rd, but she is an excellent member of our commission. She contributes a lot of really good information about the environment, and she's really helpful with making videos and stuff and putting them online to help us so much. And she's just really great, and we would really like to have her stay on the commission for another three years.
Thank you, Member Claude Felter. Any comments or discussions about this appointment? May I have a motion? Okay, sometimes we've done these all together, but should we do them separately?
You should do them separately, when they are separate.
Okay, I agree. So, may I have a motion to approve the mayor's appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, please?
So moved.
Second, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for confirming Alicia Sweeney for the Board of Zoning Appeals alternate position. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. May I have a motion to reappoint Megan Westervelt to the Environment and Sustainability Commission?
Second. Or I guess I move.
Move? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Swank. Thank you, Member Thomas. All those in favor of reappointing Megan Westervelt to the Environment and Sustainability Commission, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Congratulations, Westervelt. You are reappointed. Okay, we now have an opportunity, oh, yes, Member, sorry, Member McCary.
No problem. I appreciate that. President Crowell, I just was in consultation with the law director and clerk and president prior to this to ensure that other business was the appropriate place for me to prepare to present a motion for the city of Athens to join with the city of Columbus and other municipalities in the statewide tobacco prevention lawsuit against the state of Ohio. We are fortunate to have our Assistant Law Director, Jesse, here to provide some information about the benefits. I'll just mention that by signing on to this lawsuit, there would be no financial obligation to the city. That's one of the first questions we're often asked, but I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant Law Director for a little additional information.
Sure, thank you, Member McCary. So this is a lawsuit that several municipalities are joining together to sue the state of Ohio. This, Columbus is the lead plaintiff, and this is related to their flavor tobacco ban, and not being able to see that through. Our tobacco retail license is related to that, even though we didn't pass it. We're still affected by it. So for that reason, it's kind of a strength in numbers. No monetary obligation on behalf of the city, but it does give us a chance to work with other municipalities on litigation that's important to us.
I might add that, yes, although we tabled our tobacco enforcement ordinance, we are still eligible to join due to the ordinances that we also already have on the books. So it's our law director's recommendation that we go ahead and sign on to this lawsuit.
Member Swank?
This is for the Assistant Law Director. Do you think there's any chance that this could have any kind of a negative impact on our current legal situation with the state of Ohio? Meeting the plastic bag ban?
The one I'm so intimately familiar with.
Yes.
It's a good question, Member Swank. I don't think so. I actually think that they have hired outside counsel to do this, so I don't even think it's the same attorneys who are working on it at the AG's office, so.
Okay.
You never know, but I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So with that, I believe I can make the motion that we follow our law director's recommendation by adding Athens to the lawsuit for the statewide tobacco prevention lawsuit against the state of Ohio. And I'd be looking for a second to do that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Member McCary. So this is just a straight-up vote on whether we would agree to this. Are there any comments or questions from council members on this motion and second?
I'm just curious, does this have to do with home rule?
Yeah.
Is that really what this is all about? That's what I assumed, but nobody said that, so I went, okay.
It's a good keyword to use.
Other questions or comments? Other elected officials, Mayor?
It has everything to do with home rule.
I first sort of thought so.
And the consistent erosion thereof.
Exactly.
So I think you guys know how I feel about it.
Cut an empty chair for if you want to vote.
Other, other elected officials, audience members? Okay, we have a motion and a second to follow the law director's recommendation. Okay, we have a motion and a second to follow the law director's recommendation to join this lawsuit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and please inform the law director we're on board. Any other announcements and other business from council members or elected officials? Yes, Member Claude Felter?
Very briefly, also in regard to the city's Environment and Sustainability Commission, we are going to have a vacancy on the commission next month, so if anyone watching this or in the room is interested in joining that commission, you can link to the commission from the city's webpage and see where you could submit, submit your resume and your, your expression of interest in joining.
Member McCary?
Thanks to the inspiration from Member Claude Felter, I should also mention that although the Athens Community Relations Commission doesn't have any formal openings, to my knowledge, at this time, we are looking for folks who would be interested in joining some of the efforts parallel to the Strong Cities in combating polarization and hate, so if you have interest in doing anything around that kind of inclusion, dialogue across differences, then contacting our city's DIA coordinator, Lacy Rogers, or myself, as members of that commission would be happy to have help, whether it's with a special interest in race, or LGBT, or religion, or other kinds of differences.
Thank you. Okay, we now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, I would take a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned at nine-twenty-six.